All right, good evening. This is the June 1st, 2022 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. Before we get started, I would like to take a moment. You know, this time of year, many of us have spent time recently reflecting on lives that have been cut too short. Monday was Memorial Day honoring those who gave their lives to their deaths in service to the United States. There were several observances on Memorial Day around our area. One was in the Memorial Park in downtown Durham, in which three Oyster River students participated in word and music, in addition to scouts from Oyster River. And that remembrance was respectful and poignant. We're also acutely aware of those who lost their lives as victims of violence, particularly of students and teachers in Uvalde, Texas. As these losses weigh heavily on our hearts, I'm going to ask that we start with a moment of silence for people in our community, in Uvalde, and elsewhere, and in service that were lost too soon. So our next item is the approval of the agenda for tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion for the agenda. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a proposed amendment.
UC?
Yes, the proposed amendment would be for a non-public meeting under the DEIJ coordinator, following the presentation and any Q and A, but before discussion. And that would be, the RSA would be for the hiring of any person as a public employee, I believe.
Okay, so we have a motion, UC, to add a non-public to the, in the DEIJ coordinator discussion under the contents report. A second from Matt. Discussion on that? All those in favor of adding that non-public? All opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstentions? All right, so we have five, one, and one.
Michael, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to add into the discussion items, a topic to discuss and possibly vote on the naming of facilities.
Brian's motion to add a discussion of naming of facilities as an item under discussion action items. Do you have a second?
I will second.
You have a second from Denise. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Three in favor, opposed. One opposed, abstentions. So with, with three abstentions, and three in favor and one opposed, it actually passes because abstentions don't count as votes, as present votes. So that is added. The votes in favor were Brian, Denise, and Heather. UC was the opposed. Dan, Matt, myself. Okay, all right. Other changes to the agenda? All right. Those in favor of the agenda as amended? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the agenda is approved. All right, so that brings us to public comment. I don't believe we have anybody here for public comment tonight. Is that true? And then the approval of the minutes from May 18th. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from May 18th.
You have a motion for the regular meeting minutes. A second from Brian. Discussion additions, corrections?
I have one correction. In section B, where the senator was given the tour, it was by the fifth graders, not by the sixth graders.
I also have a correction on page five, where board members thanked everyone who turned out to meet the candidates for DEIJ coordinator position. It says the hiring committee will review stakeholders' responses. It should be Dr. Morris will review stakeholders' responses.
With those, with those, with those corrections, all those in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes for May 18th? Six in favor, abstentions, opposition abstentions, sorry, abstention. Minutes are approved. And the non-public minutes? Denise?
Make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes for May 18th.
We have a motion from Denise and a second from Brian for the May 18th non-public minutes. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor of the non-public minutes? One more time, please. Six in favor, opposed, abstentions. Six, zero, one. Those are approved. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
David Goldsmith, Mohairat. Nice to see you all. We are, as everyone is, heading into the home stretch of the year. And in June, for us, we have a bunch of exciting activities. You know that we have a yearly curriculum theme in our school. This year, it's been Year of the Artist. And tomorrow, in fact, is our Day of the Artist. We always have a full day to culminate our year. We haven't had it in the past two years, and in my first two years at Mohairat, they were offsite. We had them at the New Hampshire Farm History Museum, and we had it at UNH for Year of the Forest. So this is our first time, since I've been principal, I'm really excited to have our Day of at our school. We have a great number of activities. We're celebrating art all day long. We have sessions that students have been able to make choices about, to arrange their schedule for the day. And we also have some school-wide events. We're making a school-wide Domino art project and donating the cereal boxes from the Domino's to End 68 Hours of Hunger. We're doing some all-school reflections and some assemblies, and then we'll have our art sessions. They're being taught by teachers, staff, community members. Our superintendent is going to be joining us. We have people from all walks of life in Oyster River coming to take part and teach our kids different activities and different skills in a huge host of art activities. So we're really excited about that. We did just have our fourth grade families from both Mohairat and Mastway go to the middle school. I don't want to take all of Jay's information, but it was great to see our families get to go to the middle school and tour and ask questions and meet Jay and his staff as part of the transition that we do with all of our students and families for that. And then, of course, the last week of school, we have our Mohairat Day, which used to be Field Day, but we've expanded it to more activities than just PE, so we call it Mohairat Day. It's also the same day as our fourth grade Fun Day, and then that night, we have our fourth grade recognition. So we have a lot of great activities coming up, and it's, you know, it's always exciting and bittersweet at the same time to close up a year and say goodbye to students and welcome new families in. So we're, we're doing all that. It's pretty great. Questions, comments, thoughts? Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Misty Lowe from Mastway. I just left a special celebration for our retirees. As you know, we have three very special people who are ending their careers and have spent many years at Mastway School, serving our school community. So it was fun to see retirees, both past and present, people come from years past who have retired, and it's just wonderful to see them and visit with them and celebrate their careers. So that was a lot of fun. We had our local librarians from Durham, Lee, and Madberry at Mastway today. They read to our students and promoted their summer reading programs, which was a lot of fun. We also had Mr. Richard visit Mastway. He talked with our rising fifth graders about the fun transition that's about to come their way in this beautiful new building, answered lots of questions. The students were very interested in the variety of after-school clubs and had lots of questions about how they can promote different types of clubs that might meet their interest, which was really exciting. So I think our kids are feeling ready to make that transition. We're also very excited about having an in-person fourth grade recognition this year. In the short time I've been here, they've had to be these drive-through parades, which we had a ball with and made the best of, and they were a lot of fun. But to be able to have the parents come to Mastway and be in person and celebrate the years that their children have been at the school is really exciting. So that is one of the many things coming up in the next 12 to 13 days of school that are left for this year, where we look forward to having our parents come and celebrate with us in person. We've, we've missed having them in the building, so we look forward to that. Any questions for me about Mastway? Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Jay Richard, the principal of the middle school. Michael, I want to thank you for the moment of silence. I appreciate that. I know many others do. Misty and David already talked about it's transition time. It's that time of year. We're working very hard to get ready for the upcoming year in terms of things like student placement. On the teacher workshop day on Friday, we did, my teachers worked on the transition and worked and collaborated on placement for next year. That's the first time we've actually been able to do that in quite some time due to the past couple of years. And typically, that May day, when we do that, planning has been taken away because of inclement weather or snow days or things like that. So it was actually very, very helpful. We also had an hour with Mary Ann Nice to talk about the science of reading, which was actually excellent as well. Misty and David both mentioned I had a transition night for incoming fourth grade parents last Thursday night. That was very well attended. I want to say there were at least 75 parents there. And we also did an open tour of the facility after that. And again, just to give you some feedback, parents are thrilled about the new facility. They're really excited about that, that their children are going into this brand-new middle school. Misty met, I met with Mastway today. Again, that's a ton of fun for me. Kids often ask really good, tough questions. In the previous week, I met with the Mohairat students. I do want to mention we're going to have a step-up experience on Friday, June 10th, with the elementary school students. The grade four students will be coming over to the middle school. They'll be spending three hours with us. They'll actually eat lunch in the Learning Commons. And my world language staff and my music staff will be exposing them to what the fifth grade experience looks like in those two areas. And they have some big decisions to make. And what I mean by that is I shared with parents last Thursday, they need to select what music choice they're going to do, chorus, band, or strings, as well as world language choices, Spanish, French, or Mandarin Chinese. So it's some big decisions for some families, and I've asked them to, you know, talk that through together. Lastly, I want to thank Matt Bacon. I'm going to take some of his announcement tonight because he's actually our prop person for a Midsummer's Night Dream, which is actually this weekend, Saturday night at 7:00 and Sunday at 1:00. I'm fortunate, all of our students in the middle school get to see the shows. We're actually going to split the kids up, so it's a great opportunity. And if you don't know what a prop person is, Sarah Kuhn and Julianne Woodbury explained to me tonight, it's pretty much anything and everything that needs to be done for the show, Matt's been helping out with. So I'm grateful for that, Matt. Thank you. And that's it. Appreciate the time tonight.
Mr. Richard, did you say that you're having all the fourth graders from both schools?
Correct. Yep. So we're going to bus them over on Friday, June 10th. I collaborated with Lisa Hoppy, our transportation department, and of course, David and Misty. And the fourth grade, fourth grade teachers are actually coming with the students. So we have a lot of activities planned. For the first time we've ever done something like that, but I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Noe for Oyster River High School. I'm going to start with the most exciting news that I received a couple of days ago. We weren't allowed to share until today, but Kathy Stetson is one of the 10 semifinalists for the state Teacher of the Year. And so today, that became public, and so she'll be working on that over the summer. And we should find out probably late summer, early fall, if she gets to move forward. But we're very excited for her, very proud of her. Olivia is going to talk about some sports events this weekend, so I'm going to save that for her to talk about when she does her, her part. A couple other things, we had underclassmen awards last night that went really well. And so it was really exciting to see the kids get their moment on the stage for many different types of awards from departments and acknowledge them in book awards for the juniors. So we're very proud of them also. Jackson Stoud will be racing in the U.S. Rowing Youth National Championship in Florida next week. And so I got that news today, so we're proud of him and hope he does really well and excited for that opportunity. And then one thing I did want to go over really quick, Olivia's going to talk about a lot of events that are coming up, and then we also have two this evening at the same time that we're here. But I did want to go over what we're calling Reading Days, which are the days before final exams, and just talk about the schedule for final exams, just in case there are questions out there. So those schedules have gone out in the newsletter, but they're also, if they're not on the webpage right now, they will be by tomorrow. So parents can also go to the webpage to look at those schedules if they would like to. But what we call Reading Days in the school would be Wednesday, the 8th, Thursday, the 9th, Friday, the 10th, and then Monday, the 13th. And what that means is we have regular classes in the morning, and there are two hours in the afternoon of what we're calling work sessions, where teachers can pull kids in, and it can be for relearning, reassessment, incomplete work, review sessions, competency work, any of those things that a student might need to help them raise their grade, do better, look at competencies they hadn't accomplished yet for the year, and get that work completed so they earn credit in the class. And so for those four days, teachers can pull them in, and they'll specifically individually work with those kiddos. And then during final exams, the two exams are in the morning. That's going to be the 14th, 15th, 16th, and 17th. For both those weeks, there are buses at 12:45, Barrington and for the Oyster River area. And then there are buses at the regular time at 2:50. So the students who stay in the afternoon have their 2:50 bus, the two tests in the morning, and then there are smaller work sessions in the afternoon on those days. So students can continue to work with teachers if they need to, on work that they need to accomplish. So I just wanted parents, if there are any questions, to be able to answer those. And they can also email me if there are questions just about the schedule. Any questions from you? Yes?
For the Reading Days, is it a compressed schedule for all the classes within the morning?
Correct. Yep, there's 60-minute classes in the morning instead of 80. Okay, thank you very much.
Here.
Oh, I did have one more. Do you know what, was it Jackson? Do you know what he's rowing?
I don't. No, I didn't get that information, but I can find out. It was his rowing coach that emailed me and let me know, so I can get a hold of her.
I'm just curious. I used to be a rower back in the day. I want to know.
Okay, I will email her and find out. Okay, thank you.
Olivia had a question.
I think it's a four.
Okay. I don't know what that is.
The boat. There's four people.
Okay.
It could be a quad or a straight four or a coaxed four, but I will live with, it's a four.
All right. And I'll find out for sure.
All right. Others from the district? And from the board? Denise?
It's been wonderful to attend so many in-person events, including, I stopped by the art show before our meeting tonight. It was wonderful. Have attended many of the musical events, and two I particularly want to single out. Last Tuesday, I was supposed to attend a panel discussion on anxiety, but I was too anxious to go to a panel discussion on anxiety. So I went to the kindergarten concert instead, and it was just phenomenal. And again, I know we acknowledged Pam Felber at our last board meeting, but just a wonderful, wonderful event, and the kids were so, looked so happy, and they, they did so many fun things. And so that was wonderful. It was definitely what I needed. And then I also went, want to single out the high school band and orchestra concert. I was a little late to that because I had the wrong time, but what I did see was fantastic. And I was sitting there, and I was thinking, it's too bad more people from the community weren't there, because we have this fantastic recital hall. You know, we talked about being able to have these events, and the sound was so amazing. And I thought, but they don't really know about it. So I know that we have a communication workshop coming up next week, and that's definitely going to be on my list of things to talk about, because I would really like to see next year more information go out to the general community so that they can attend, particularly a big event like that, that was so well done. Thank you.
Heather?
Go ahead. I'm just going to piggyback on what Denise said. I don't know if they've done it before, this is the first time I've attended, but the band Palooza out on the turf field was so much fun. The kids had a blast. It was a movie, movie theme, except for the high school who were working on pieces for competition. And I think my favorite part was getting to see the eighth-grade band play with the high school band. And that was a really fun way to cap the evening. And so the, the two middle school band teachers and the high school band teacher, just a really nice job.
I know we needed a moment of silence, and thoughts and prayers, and all that. There was also the mass shootings of black elders at a supermarket in Buffalo, Asian church in California, recent synagogue, Pulse nightclub a few years ago, but important to mention at the start of Pride Month. And gun laws are outside of the purview of, of schools and school boards. But the other two things that rise up for me that we can do, that we are doing, is around mental health and social emotional learning, and about teaching tolerance and empathy for people who are different than you. And so it brings me comfort to know that we are doing what we can in these areas to, to strengthen society and do what we can to, to, to limit this sort of atrocity.
All right. District reports. Assistant Superintendent?
I am going to actually turn it over to the high school students and to Mark Milliken to speak with you this evening about the dress code. So I'm going to turn it over to them, if they want to come up. And they'll introduce themselves. The kids would like to do that.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mae Fickock. I'm a sophomore at Oyster River High School. And then with me, I have Delaney Nado, who is also a sophomore, and then Greg Karen, who is a freshman. And then we have Charlotte Merritt, who is a senior, but she cannot make it tonight. And then Mr. Milliken over here, and Ms. Noe, and Mr. McCann, who is at Coffee House currently. Obviously, we are here to talk about the dress code, and we have a proposal that I'm sure most of you already have. This initially started with a meeting in June of 2021, and this took place with Student Senate. And this was initially brought up because of an email sent out with the dress code that we currently had. Nothing wrong with the dress code. I mean, it was the same one we've always had, but it struck a note with students because we had just gone through COVID. We'd come back, and now we have this dress code to look at. And a lot of students saw that this is something we need to change. Our goals, as we've been meeting since September, were to revise the current dress code and current policy, which has not been revised in many years. I think it was 1990 it's been in place since, so it's been a while. And to involve both student and adult voices in the process. So the actions we've taken, we've discussed the purpose of having a dress code, which is very important, and it's something that we all came in, we talked about, we wanted to make clear why we're doing this and what pretty much a dress code was. We reviewed the current dress code we have, and then we started researching dress codes in the area. So Portsmouth High School, Cole Brown, we did Bedford, Milford, all, pretty much all of them. And we took bits of all of those and compiled them into a list of aspects we liked about them. And then we created a rough draft of the revised code. We saw face-to-face feedback from students. It was very casual. It was really just a conversation we had with our peers and just brought up the issue and heard what they had to say about it. Then we surveyed OHS staff. 53 responded. We felt that those were really important because this is their workplace, and we wanted to make sure that they were heard. Then we surveyed parents. 56 responded. We surveyed students. 180 responded, so that was our largest chunk, and we thought that would also be our largest chunk, because that was where most of our feedback was coming from. We shared a draft proposal with the OHS staff for input, and they gave us more feedback. And then we are presenting to you tonight, and I would like to pass this over to Delaney.
It's actually Greg's card. Greg's card. So Greg, go ahead.
So when we're distributing the dress code, we're going to accompany it with a goal of why, just what it's for. And it's really just to promote a safe learning and work environment for all, and make sure that no one's unfairly discriminated against. Yep, so I'm going to pass it over to Delaney to give the specifics.
One very important thing to mention also was this piece that we will be making sure is included along with the protocol, is this line of, no student should be affected by clothing enforcement because of racial identity, sex assigned at birth, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, ethnicity, cultural or religious identity, household income, body size or type, or body maturity. So our dress code as a whole contains three sections. Students must wear, students may wear, and students cannot wear, to make it very clear and as objective as possible to enforce. So the students must wear section is very brief. You must wear a shirt, bottoms, and shoes. The shirt was a controversial subject in regards to the midriff area, and we found through surveys and conversations with staff and students, as well as parents, that the best language to utilize was clothing that covers most of the midriff area, because we really wanted to make sure that it fit with the current trends, which is part of what the complaints from students were in the beginning. The may wear section, also pretty generic, as we're all allowed to wear now. Some key points include hats, hooded sweatshirts, leggings, pajamas, and ripped jeans, as long as no underwear is exposed. Students cannot wear, very basic as well, clothing or accessories with images or language depicting or advocating violence or the use of alcohol or drugs. Images, symbols, or language that are derogatory or create a hostile or intimidating learning environment towards any group of people or protected class. Clothing or accessories that have vulgar or inappropriate images, symbols, or language associated with said images or symbols. And visible underwear, which was a main topic as well, with the concern over specifically female bra straps being visible. So our line is visible underwear, straps of undergarments worn under clothing are not a violation. So that's a main change as well. And then no bathing suits, no helmets, except for religious observances or COVID-related masks. And the excessively short skirts or shorts, basically your buttocks has to be covered, and no nipples or abdominal sides may be exposed. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Milliken for the enforcement.
I can't applaud these kids enough for the time that they've spent doing this. The conversations we've had, humorous at times, you can tell by some of the language that some of these were very difficult decisions and involved a lot of compromise. So our goal was to find a balance between being specific enough to be informative and general enough to allow uniqueness and individuality, and we hope that we've struck that. But we also recognize, like, like the kids were saying, we tried to develop a foundation, a purpose. What is it for? A lot of our conversations were around, why even have a dress code? We talked about businesses that have dress codes, and why do they? And this is a school, place of learning, and what is our mission? To help prepare kids for what's outside of these buildings. And how to dress is part of that. So there was a lot of that involved, and something that we, we heard a lot, loud and clear, and I hope we've addressed it, but having the foundation of the purpose means that this is changeable, revisable. If we, if trends change, clothing changes, new issues arise, we have a foundation of our purpose to go back to, to, to say, okay, we could tweak this, we could tweak that. If we have a gray area with a student, we also have a foundation. What is our purpose? And that we can explain it with, with the students. Enforcement was something the kids were really concerned about. Really, the, the phrase was, I, I got dress coded. And this year, we have not at all enforced the dress code, knowing that this was under review. But what we tried very hard to do was to make sure that no student was singled out publicly, embarrassed publicly in any way. And we tried to find a way that the teachers would be able to subtly alert the office to a possible dress for success infraction, for lack of a better term. So what is, what is in the document is that the teacher would So what is, what is in the document is that the teacher would in between, oh, the other part was we didn't want any student to miss academic time for this. So that in between passing, the, this, the current thought is that we have a pass, the student is given a pass to go to the office. The pass will look like other passes. There's a debate about whether the pass should have an indication of what, what dress is in question. And I must say that the staff, that's something we're still working on with the staff. Teachers are in the forefront, and we need to listen to them. So Friday, we had a lot of conversation about this, so I anticipate this will be tweaked a little bit. But in some way, teachers will quietly let the office know the student will be given a pass to come to the office during passing time, and the student would meet with one of the administrators in the office, and we would have a conversation again about purpose and why we have a dress code and what is questionable and more instructive than punitive. So the feedback from teachers, some teachers were hoping for a quicker way to remain, to be anonymous and to not single out the students, and so we'll probably work on that. We also need to know right away, the office needs to know right away, and the office needs to know that a student is on their way. So that's, that's the skeleton, the framework of the enforcement. Needs to be clear who's responsible for it and how do you do it in a way that the teacher is comfortable and the student is not made to feel uncomfortable. And then the consequences, we also wanted to spell out the consequences so that it's very clear that in the beginning, it's instructive, but we are recording it so that we know if there's, if there are repeated offenses, and we can handle that appropriately. But again, all year, since September, every week almost, we've met, we've talked, we've debated, we've surveyed, we've read anonymous comments, we've laughed a lot, and they are just, just amazing. So I don't know if you have questions for us.
Good job.
If you're going to give yourselves advice a year ago, now looking back about how to go about this process, what would you say? Are you happy with how it went? Would you do anything differently?
I think personally, I'm happy with the way it went. I was very involved from the beginning. I was at the Student Senate meeting where Mr. Milliken came and we discussed this. I think if I were to go through and do it all again, I would probably just spend more time reflecting on what the issues were and getting, we got a lot of student feedback, but getting more specific student feedback from a larger group of students other than just my peers and their peers would probably have been another option. But I think we've done an overall pretty solid job.
I really like how you've set the foundation with some of the foundational beliefs to guide any changes that happen as fashion changes, as times change. I'm curious how it extends to sports, if at all?
So the sports and athletic uniforms that are given out are separate to the dress code that we have now. The dress code is for in-person and in-school activities. Sports uniforms, for the most part, they're given by Andy, they're athletic uniforms, so they almost always remain appropriate for that sport.
We did have a little bit of discussion regarding specifically the girls' volleyball uniforms and their shorts, meeting different things, which is why we were very conscious of the language that we used to ensure that they didn't feel like their dress, their uniforms were a violation and that we didn't have comments like, oh, well, if they can wear this to their games, then why can't we wear this to classes? So that's where we were very specific about the language that we used.
I guess I was curious about sports bras and about shirts versus no shirts or that sort of thing, outside of the mandate.
I think in that sense, it pretty much covers, like, you have to wear, the must-wear applies to every part of your academic experience here, be it sports, classes, extracurriculars, all that. So I would say the must-wear for sure applies to all of that.
So if I may, I think you guys did an extraordinary job in putting this together. It's so well-written. When I read it yesterday for the first time, I thought it came from a university student. You guys really did that, that great. Mark, my question in terms of where we are as a school system relates to the word consequences and whether restorative practices would be a better approach because the word consequences speaks of punishment.
Yes.
And what you're really trying to do is educate.
Yes.
And so I'd suggest that you look at the consequences piece from the perspective of restorative practices.
Great, great input. And if you, in looking at the actual process that we go through, it is restorative. So it's actually a misnomer to call it a consequence because we do want to review the whole policy with the student. Good point. Thank you. And thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go into the superintendent's report, I'm going to commandeer the first item there. We've been very fortunate to have an outstanding student representative from the high school on the school board this year. I would like to recognize Olivia Gass, and thank you, Olivia. For your insights and dedication over the last year, this is not an easy role. The role of the student representative is an important and unique link between students and the school board, and you've continued a strong tradition of being an articulate and independent voice for students. I hope that you've found it to be both interesting and worthwhile, and that you'll consider being involved in local government service in the future. And as a token of our appreciation, we have flowers and a small memento for you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And best of luck. And everyone ahead.
Thank you.
We knew you were a scholar and an athlete, and until tonight, I didn't know you were an artist as well. So many amazing pieces at the art show.
Thank you.
Wait, was your bowl at the art show?
It was, yeah.
Yes!
I mean, you could still run by, I'm sure, at the end of the meeting. It'll be there. The art show is up the rest of the week, I believe, so.
Now, I just want to say a huge thank you for your dedication. You've been here every meeting, as UC mentioned, juggling all your commitments, and you have done a wonderful job in, in being a voice for the students.
Thank you.
All right. Jim, go.
Michael, did we skip an agenda item with Catherine?
Suzanne told me we were all done with that section. You thought we were. Just a couple small updates, so.
Let the record show that I tried to avoid.
You tried to write me off. Thanks a lot.
The COVID section.
That's right. We're all trying to cross that section off. So just a quick update locally, our data is trending back down. Things are looking much better across the district. Of course, with the high school, there's a little bit of uptick. We anticipate that as activities are continuing to happen. Parents are working extremely well at the nursing office. So in general, things look good. We anticipate some spikes because of events, but we're in a manageable spot. One other update we wanted to share with you tonight is for the last few weeks of school, we are going to make a small shift in how we bring students back. So the CDC updated their guidance in terms of looking at that fifth day. So if you are positive on the fifth day, you can test. It's recommended that you test. And if you were positive, you stayed out for additional five days. New Hampshire is not interested in changing their protocol, but the CDC has. And so after the fifth day, if you choose to test and you're positive, we're going to allow you to continue to test until you're negative. In the event you become negative before day 10. So if you test negative on day six, then you could come back and not wait until day 11, once you finish your 10-day quarantine. We are going to be, the nurses are going to be aware of this information. We're not going to send a big district-wide email about it because it's only going to impact those who call the nurse and say, my child is positive, what do I do now? And so the nurse will then say, it's recommended that you test on day five. If you are still positive, then continue to test until you are negative up until day 10, up through day 10. As a reminder, though, if you return, day six through 10, you're wearing a mask. That still is the protocol that's within New Hampshire DHHS guidelines. So we wanted to inform you all of that tonight to let you know that we do anticipate operating that way. It'll also help potentially any seniors that are coming back from quarantine to potentially come out before day 10 if they're positive after day five. Any questions about that? No? All right. See you next week. No, two weeks.
Thank you, Catherine. All right, Dr. Morse.
Thank you. So that brings us to a reminder that Catherine is the Special Services Director of the Year in New Hampshire, and she'll be recognized on Saturday night along with dozens of people who have excelled in their particular field in public education. And Sean Paschal is the, will also be recognized as the Extended Learning Opportunity Coordinator in the state. So we actually have two significant awards being presented to Oyster River leadership. And so I couldn't be more excited for Catherine or Sean. So a whole bunch of us will be trooping up to Manchester to be there in support of them. Which brings me to my next issue, which is the nomination of a DEIJ coordinator. I just want to remind the board and the public of the process. We started with, once the applications were in, we screened down to six finalists. We had a committee made up of parents and board members and teachers and administrators and students. We ended up with the two finalists during the time I was gone, and I should say thank you to Suzanne during the time I was gone. She did a great job, and I appreciate it. She brought the finalists through to the schools, and she brought the finalists to the DEIJ committee and to the community. And during that time, she handed out index cards, and that would provide me feedback when I came back, which were on my desk when I came back, and I read through them. And then the next step of this was me taking the candidates through the district and having a conversation with them. So my conversation with both the finalists were, one was four hours, and the one, the person I'll be recommending to you tonight was six hours. And so I got to know them on a much more personal basis than you would in an interview. And I have to say that I was incredibly impressed with Rachel, Rachel Blensett. She's a young, a young person who has experience in DGI work at the collegiate level, and she's worked in a consultancy with public education. When we think about people's backgrounds, she's a first-generation college student from East Detroit, so she has a very intimate understanding of what it is to be a young Black person. So that gives her incredible lived experience. She was the enthusiastic choice of the teachers on the committee. When I was walking her through the district, the teachers that were on the committee were incredibly excited to see her. And so, you know, when I, when I look at any candidate, and the administrative team knows this is the number one issue for me, is do they like slash love children? When we bring people in, we can't teach people to love children. We can teach people the skills to teach reading, or math, or science, or, or literacy, but, you know, are they clued in to, to the child? And so that's always, you know, my barometer. I have to say, both finalists were very much articulated in different ways how important children were to them. When I was reviewing, so we did three written recommendations, which were in your packet, but we also did four verbal telephone calls. I did two cold calls, meaning that they weren't on their list, which I always do. I try to figure out who would be the right person to call and, and their background or somebody that should know them. And so, you know, the descriptors that came about were words like wholeheartedly endorse, develops strong relationships, is flexible and adapted, adaptive, has the ability to synthesize new information, and has a passion for her work. So when you get recommendations that don't equivocate, that they're that strong and that supportive, it really kind of reinforces where I was in the, in the process. So what I recommend, so, you know, in terms of what does Rachel need to learn, she has to learn about Oyster River. Oyster River is a unique school system in and of itself, different from every school system that I've worked in. It's an intense school system with high expectations, high expectations by parents, high expectations by the community, high expectations by the students themselves. This is a driven school system. So learning about our community is really going to be an important part, whether it's Rachel or any other person in this role. And quite frankly, I think that she has the skills and the ability to do that. And so I really do highly recommend, strongly recommend that Rachel be our first DEIJ coordinator in the district, and recommend them to, recommend her to you.
Do we have, we could do questions now?
I was just going to ask, you asked to add a non-public discussion to this part of the meeting. Going to do that now, or do I have some?
Let's have some questions.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Jim. Rachel has a, has a lot to offer. Some of the things that really stood out to me in the first interview, as well as the community conversation, were her understanding of different groups of people and ability to find themes and commonalities between them. She seems to have experience talking with people of a wide variety of beliefs and backgrounds. Secondly, she's had experience designing DEIJ-specific curricula, like leading workshops or discussions about implicit bias or different lenses on this work. One thing that struck me was the relative lack of experience in K-12 system and also especially in working directly with faculty on something that's not DEIJ-focused, but rather weaving DEIJ in a lens through a, an existing sort of history or math or art curriculum. And I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about that aspect of it, whether you see, you know, that as, as a relative weakness or as something that could be leaned into and grown to the way you described, and also what the teachers felt, I guess. You mentioned in the, in the yellow sheet that the, or in the, in the nomination, that she was the clear choice of the, by the majority, but that when you have two finalists, that could be a relative favorite rather than a gushing endorsement of an individual.
So as I reviewed the cards, there was only one teacher card that chose the other candidate as number one. All the other teachers who filled out the card chose Rachel as number one. In terms of her lack of K-12 experience, I think that, you know, you end up, they were, we could have hired, focused in on K-12 experience, but based on the candidates we had, we would have lost completely the lived experience. So I, the enthusiasm that I, that I sense from the teachers as I walk through the building, people that surprised me, quite frankly, about welcoming both candidates, but really enthusiastic about having an asset that's available to them. So my issue with the K-12 experience is she's not the teacher. She's there to support the teacher. And so the example that I would use is And so the example that I would use is music, where we have a teacher who has this very dynamic experience with the kids, and you walk into his classroom, and this is something you noticed, where it's all male, white people that are surrounding the classroom, and something as simple as, how do I represent people of color who are great musicians? How do I, how do I bring that forward in my music? So the role of the coordinator isn't to be the teacher. The role of the coordinator is to support the teacher, and their needs to expand their repertoire in dealing with the curriculum, and what's appropriated, different grade levels, which would be a dialogue, providing resources that the teacher doesn't have time to research, you know, who are the great African writers? And so that the English department can say, oh, this is what I want to use in my curriculum. So the work of the DEIJ coordinators is to support the efforts that the teachers want to move forward, to build their skill sets in relation to not just issues of color, but issues of sexuality and gender, to build their skill sets in dealing with issues of disability. So their, and religious variety, and supporting from atheism to all of the major religions that we do. So the role of the coordinator is, as we emphasized in the job description, is to support the system, but most importantly, to support the teacher in expanding their ability to address issues that they haven't lived and that uncomfortable addressing. And so that's where I see her providing us the greatest resource.
One referenced, referenced the working with a college instructor. Was there any experience that you, experience? It seems that there is a marked difference in sort of leading with DEIJ versus weaving it through, and having experience working with faculty around their, you know, particular classroom goals, you know, in social studies, or in anything else. So there's, it seemed that whether you're, that there's a difference between, again, leading with it versus integrating it. But your sense was that there was experience, aptitude, and potential in integrating?
Absolutely. In both cases, I think that, you know, she is going to define, she's going to define this role in this upcoming year. I mean, I think the greatest gift that we as Oyster River can give her is a strong understanding of who we are in these next six months. This, again, is a very unique system, and we see ourselves as incredibly progressive. And in that progressiveness, we also are kind of fumbly and bumbly. You know, we're not smooth, we don't have the same understandings of these issues because, by and large, most of us were raised in a fairly white, middle-class environment. And when our marginalized students are struggling, they're struggling because of self-identity. And so we need not just somebody who supports the teachers, but also understands those student concerns, and is able to hear the students, but also help the teachers address those issues. So I don't know if I'm hitting it directly in the question you're asking, but I do feel like she is, she will grow to be a powerful leader. I don't think she's going to be the leader in the first couple of months as she gets to know us, but I think she has all the potential of being an incredible leader. And I know that she has the potential to support our staff and students. Yes, Heather?
So I wanted to add a couple of things that I took from Rachel during the interview. The first was is that she was the only candidate that we interviewed that talked about, I'm gonna phrase this poorly because I can't remember exactly how she phrased it, but essentially educational accessibility, not just diversifying the curriculum, but also the way we teach the curriculum to make sure it's accessible to all the students in the classroom. And that's something that I think blends very well with the work our teachers are already doing, and thinking about neurodiversity in our student population. The second is her depth of experience in restorative practices, which is very integral to our identity, or the identity we're trying to build as a district, and our social-emotional learning goals. And the third thing that I really liked about Rachel was that if she didn't feel she had the depth of experience in a certain topic, she wasn't gonna fake it or try to make it up. She fully recognizes where she has her limitations. Sorry, my son needs medicine. And that's where she, you know, she talked about tapping into her professional networks, and the folks that she knew that had expertise in areas she didn't, and how she was willing to utilize those resources to help match things up, to move the conversation forward. And those were three things that I really liked about Rachel, and really impressed me.
So we'd be looking for a motion either to enter non-public, or to move forward with addressing the nomination?
Motion to enter non-public with RSA 91A:3 to see the hiring of any person as a public employee, to B, I suppose.
I'll second.
We have a motion from UC, and a second from Dan. Requires a roll call vote?
Heather Smith, yes.
UC Terrell, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, abstain.
Denise Day, abstain.
Brian Sisneros, no.
Matt Bacon, yes.
That's four yes, one no, two abstentions, so we'll go into non-public session.
All right, we are back in public session. It's 8:31. We've been discussing the nomination for DEIJ Coordinator. Looking for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Rachel Blancet as our DEIJ Coordinator as presented by the Superintendent.
We have a motion from Brian and a second from Matt. Sorry you were too slow Heather.
Yeah, sorry.
Discussion?
So, I am really excited about Rachel. I think she's going to do an amazing job and I'm excited to bring her in.
Others?
I was concerned at the understanding the pool of potential candidates and the recruiting that we did that led to 16 completed applications and wondering about the trade-offs that we would be making at a relatively, you know, it's a high salary. The choice to offer the low end of the range as well as understanding the growth trajectory of, that Rachel could have over the course of the district allayed some of those concerns and I would be excited to have her.
I think this has been a very thorough process and a very broad interview committee that was involved including students, including staff, including including members of the community in addition to board members and administrators. So, I appreciate that and the rigor of that process. All right, so the motion is to approve the nomination of Rachel Blancet as DEIJ Coordinator. All those in favor? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Rachel is approved.
Just as a closing thought on that Michael, I'll have Rachel at the meeting on the 15th to greet the board so you all, you know, can say hello and welcome her to the district.
Excellent. Anything else in your section Jim?
I don't think so. I think that was it Michael.
All right.
Right, that's it.
Business Administrator.
Good evening. You have another budget update for this year's budget.
You have another budget update for this year's budget. And actually, that one was dated May eighteenth. Today, I did go through a lot of the budget and look at what's happened since the eighteenth. And I will tell you, I'm a little nervous about having that one point four at this point. It's gonna be tight, so, just a heads up on that. I'm keeping a close watch on everything. We're pretty well finished up with our expenses, but there are things that are ongoing that we will still be paying. Questions?
Denise?
That's much a question. It's just a acknowledgement of the increased fuel costs and, you know, and I'm also looking towards our budget, our next year's budget. That wasn't anticipated, and I guess it's just always a good reminder, you know, when we do these budgets, that you really don't know and you, you know, I know that that is one of the things that you, Sue and Dr. Morris have always looked at, is we, you build, you build because you, there's always so many unknowns and certainly, who could have predicted the increased cost of gas and fuel, you know, doubling, so.
So, Sue, can you address that in terms of our contracts and whether the state is making any adjustment and whether our vendors are making any adjustments?
Well, in terms of the bus contract, are you talking about?
Terms of fuel costs, utility costs in general?
Just in general, we do have a contract for the supply on both electricity and gas, which helps, but there's still, there isn't any guarantee on those. They're still increasing, and I looked at those, they're still under budget, and they will be at the end of the year, believe it or not, so we have an ample budget to cover that.
What about the diesel, Sue?
Diesel's the one that we have a state contract, or under the state contract, the April bill held the two thirty-seven a gallon.
That's amazing.
Which is amazing. We haven't received in May, yeah. I'm assuming that there's probably some clause in that contract. I don't have, I don't have that contract that allows them to increase when these kind of things happen, so we probably will see an increase in May. I don't know, it'll be out soon.
And the state isn't giving us any, any indication that to anticipate increased costs at this point?
In terms of?
The diesel.
Haven't heard, haven't heard, but I, I don't even know when that contract is up, so that was something I reached out to Lisa to, to check on, so.
And in the past, Lisa and the drivers have used either the state or a local service provider?
We use local for the van, so that is impacting us because those take regular, but diesel, we've always used the state because they've always had a better price, pretty much, pretty much a better price on the state. But, yeah, the vans are increasing because that, they're just filling up at the station, so.
So, I think Denise, your observation is, you know, well-made, and we may see the state contract change, but we don't have any indication yet of how it will change. I mean, if we're, right now, we would be paying below wholesale, those prices held.
Yeah. So, stay tuned. And then the other item I have on the agenda is the draft budget calendar. We're talking about the twenty-three, twenty-four budget soon. So, I just put this together based on past calendars. The, you just need to note those dates, like that workshop on the twenty-seventh is a daytime session, eight to one o'clock. And other than that, yeah, we're all, they're all night meetings.
Michael, we need to adopt that?
We typically, I think we're talking about the next meeting?
Yeah, I think if you wanna review it first, or are you ready to adopt, it's up to you. I mean, we do make revisions when things come up, and that's not unheard of.
Has the calendar been cross-referenced with the other?
Okay. Yes, we did, yeah. UC was asking whether we cross-referenced that calendar with our school year calendar and checked the holidays and holy days. Wendy did do that, right?
Did she do that? I'm not.
Most of these are already meeting dates for the school board.
Yes.
So, if, if, I mean, this was in, this was in the packet that you had for the meeting. If the, if there's any questions about this, we can certainly address those, the finance committee could take it back and work on it some more, but if there's not, then there's no reason not to go ahead and approve the budget calendar tonight.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the budget calendar for the budget year twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four.
I beat Brian.
The motion from Denise and a second from Heather to approve the budget calendar. Discussion, questions?
Just a reminder, that is your calendar, so if something comes up, you have the right to change it, so it's not like it's locked in stone, but this gives you a way to plan your calendar for the upcoming year.
Point out what happens the week of November fifteenth, so November fifteenth is when the state releases their portion, the numbers that we'll have, that we can expect for, for adequacy funding. So, what that, what this says is that the finance committee will take a look at those numbers the day that they come out, which I believe is a Tuesday this year. There will be an update to the board at the meeting, the regular meeting on November sixteenth, where we typically would be, here's, you know, it'd be information to the board, not a lot of discussion most likely, that more, more information, understanding of what those numbers mean, and then follow that up with a workshop on the Thursday, the seventeenth, where we really work through implications of what that revenue side looks like. So, that, that week is the?
Crazy week.
Yeah. Kind of the peak of the budget activity.
But we did find out last year that it was incredibly beneficial, because there were no surprises for the board, and it was easier for you all to make, you know, to discuss your priorities once you had that information. So, of all of the calendars that we've had over the ten years, last year's worked the most efficiently, effectively, maybe not efficiently, we have three meetings in one week, but it worked the most effectively.
The discussion? All's in favor of the budget calendar as presented? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor, the budget calendar is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Student representative report.
I don't have too many things tonight. I have a lot of events. The senior art show was tonight, the opening, it'll be up for the rest of the week during school to go visit for students and faculty. And then the Mouth of the River Coffee House was tonight as well. The Spring Fling Social is going to be on Friday, this Friday, June third. And then National Honor Society induction got moved to June eighth, along with the World Language Honor Society induction, which will also be on June eighth, so they'll be back-to-back, so. And then senior week events, I can go through the whole schedule again, but it's the same thing that I said in the last meeting, but if you want a refresher on it, I can go through it.
Sure.
Sure, okay. So, on Monday, we have graduation practice and then a barbecue on the turf field, and that's when you'll get yearbooks and stuff. And then at six P M. is the science showcase in the library and courtyard. On Tuesday, we also have graduation practice again, and then senior scholarship awards are gonna be in the auditorium at five P M. And at seven P M., senior awards will be in the auditorium. That'll be like departmental and O R H S awards and graduation chords slash awards sort of thing. And then Wednesday is going to be the senior class trip to Fort Foster, and we'll be back by two fifteen at Oyster River. And then Thursday is graduation practice again, and then the senior walk at your middle school, whichever applies, either Oyster River Middle School or Barrington Middle School, and then as well as Masteway and Moheramit. And then at five thirty is going to be the senior banquet, which is going to be at the regatta room in Elliott, Maine. It's gonna be semi, semi-formal, and you have to drive yourselves there, because there's no busing for that, but there's busing for the class trip.
Olivia, are you guys going to visit the elementary school in Barrington as well, or just the middle school?
So, we are going to visit the elementary school, just not on that day. I believe it's June seventeenth, Barrington, students will go to the elementary school, and I believe that's students from Oyster River, Co-Brown, Dover, and Oyster River as well, so we'll all kinda go back together, I guess.
Cool.
Yeah. And then sports, I have a few sport announcements. Earlier in the meeting, I had said a, a four for the boat that's going to Nationals, but it's actually a quad, which is a sculling boat, not a sweep boat, so two oars instead of one, for those who don't know what that means. And then track states were this weekend, and we did very well. We were runners-up overall, second place, and then Haley Kavanaugh was the state champ in the eight hundred meter and runner-up in the mile by point two seconds.
Wow.
And Erin Carte, Carte, Carte won the three hundred meter. And then boys tennis championship is tomorrow at Pinkerton Academy, and so they've been undefeated this whole season, and they're playing Lebanon, I believe, so. And that's all I got for tonight. Any questions?
Any final thoughts?
Thank you, guys, for like having me as the student rep. I enjoyed it so much, and I'm so proud to be able to represent the student body and my school in this nature, and just thank you, guys, again. I'm gonna miss you, guys.
We'll miss you as well.
Thank you.
Olivia, when are elections to find your replacement?
So, I'm not a hundred percent sure on my replacement, but I believe I've seen things from voting for sophomore soon government, so I assume anytime soon, Ms. Noe might know more on that.
So, the juniors and sophomores have already voted with the way we set up their classes, and then freshmen are tomorrow, so that's the last class that needs to vote, so then we should have the new student rep name.
There you go.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Finance committee report.
Okay, we met on the twenty-fourth of May, and basically, it was, I guess you'd call it rather uneventful, nothing earth-shattering came about, but we did, we did have a new proposal for electric buses through a company named Highland, and it's something we're, we're going to ask them to present to us. They do not, they're not connected to co-op or with Nuvi. They do this on their own, and there were some nuances in there that actually were quite interesting, and working with us. So, we're gonna at least talk to them before we even go down the next, the path with anybody else, so. So, we're gonna have them in, as long as our schedules can match, we're gonna have them in to talk to us to give us an idea what, how it works. Sue, we already talked about the fund balance, we looked over that. We looked over the already scheduled bond payment schedule, just to see how it is in a few years. Twenty-four, twenty-five is kind of a, the bigger shift, although we've been utilizing the C I P., just kind of expanding and contracting to kind of make it fit in, which we've been doing pretty much every year for as long as I can remember. But it's not so much that we're concerned about it at this point. But we, we, as Michael had mentioned, we are aiming to approve the budget at the first meeting in December. It's always our goal. We hope we'll get it again this year, because we did, we did go over this draft schedule, which was now finalized for the time being, and we did all think that it was, it was very efficient and kind of really kept us on schedule last year for doing it. Yeah, we have a couple hectic weeks with the finance committee meeting and going over all this, but by the time we get those adequacy funding, usually every, all the expenses are pretty much set, we just need to know the revenue side, and that's always the big wild card that we never know and could literally throw a wrench in everything depending on how it goes. So, luckily, the state budget right now is actually looking okay, even though we're in a recession, but you never know. They change it from year to year, so there's a lot of stuff pending.
Brian, the state is, is they still considering zero increase in, in their subsidy to public schools?
From what I understand, that's what I, that's what I hear, so. Yeah, I'm not hoping, I'm not, there's no pie in the sky, numbers that are coming out of, of anything, so. But we did, one of the concerns we do have is, this is our last year with the current retirement rates that we have, because every two years, they redo the, they change the retirement rates. So, for this budget of twenty-three, twenty-four, that's when the next time it'll change. Last time it changed, it was quite substantial, cost us six hundred thousand, I believe, in one year. My concern is, because of the recession, if the return on the investments of the retirement system does not reach their goal, they usually dump it on to the districts and the municipalities. So, that is my biggest concern, at least, going forward, that's kind of the wild card. There's been no indication where they are. I know before this recession was hitting, the returns were actually excellent, higher than expected for the retirement system, but we won't know, it could get totally zeroed out by what's going on now. So, luckily, the retirement system does not spend a lot of, put a lot of their stuff in high-risk categories, they're pretty conservative, but sometimes, high risk is actually better in a bad market for certain things. Middle school contingency went over, everything looks good, we actually got some money returned to the town for, used, that we had set aside for inspections. I believe Jim had already sent out the information that we had pulled out that buried mysterious boiler, the Jimmy Hoffa's safe, or whatever it was from way back when. We were extremely lucky that there was no asbestos mitigation that was needed for it. That was the best news we've had in a while, but of course, that got kind of dampened by the fact that our turf field's gonna be delayed till October. So, that is not of any fault our own, it's just a nationwide, actually worldwide shortage on the field, so.
Five, there were five manufacturers of turf fields, and two of them went belly up due to COVID, and so there's only three manufacturers now, and that's what's causing...
And the fact that it's only till October is actually not bad. If we had to start the process over again, we're a year and a half maybe out, and then the cost is gonna go through the roof. So, sticking where we at, where we're at is probably our best bet, we could probably do some prep work in the meantime, but kids are gonna be, have to wait a couple more months for a turf field.
And just along that line, just so the board knows, Jay and I and the committee talked about when, so all of the work will be done for the field and the parking lot, the new parking lot that doesn't exist yet. So, Jay and, and Bill and I, with the committee, talked about the possibility of turning that into play space for kids for four-square and hopscotch and that kind of stuff, because the staff currently has figured out where to park. That would be additional parking, that would be more convenient, but without the field, Jay will have a hundred and sixty kids out at any given time, and the playground will be done, but it wasn't designed for a hundred and sixty kids using it at once, so we talked about the possibility of using the new parking lot as another play space for kids.
Thank you. I, well, are you done, I should ask, or was there anything else?
Just that, Michael had a great idea that we should look into having a policy or procedure about capital planning for the future, especially with having a new business administrator coming in, it'd be a nice blueprint for them to follow as we go forward, but it was purely in discussion stage right now, we may look into that in the future, and that capital planning would probably include, you know, transportation and technology as well, because we all know those are always evolving and always have expenses to keep them fresh, so that's pretty much it.
So, quite, just comment as far as the electric buses, I understand you're still kind of investigating and looking to see if it's feasible or recommended, but if it gets to the point where you wanna make a recommendation to the board, I would ask that we have the, all the backup information on the company, because I know you're having presentations and all of that, we, we don't have the benefit of, of that, and I'm not saying we need it, but just to have the full information if it gets to that point.
Absolutely.
And the other thing that I would also like to see is the bond payment schedule that you looked at, because it sounds like there, it was tweaked a little or however, so if we could get a copy of that, that would be...
Yeah, it hasn't, it hasn't changed since we last saw it.
Oh.
It just hadn't, I just asked to get it, pulled it in front of us.
Okay, so, all right.
But it has not changed at all since we last.
It's always a major budget driver, it's one of the inputs that we actually know this far ahead of time.
Right.
Just try to wrap our heads around it.
I thought things had changed somewhat, so.
No, nothing's changed.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I think, you know, Brian mentioned that the Highland Bus, Electric Bus Company is not tied to any one of the utilities, and so one of the benefits to us there is that we could put it anywhere in the district, which would mean potentially at the, where the buses are, rather than not where the buses are, which was our option if we had to work only with the co-op.
Exactly.
So, we'll see how that comes out.
Yep. That is to be determined.
All right. Thank you. unanimous consent agenda, are there any of these items that anybody would like to pull out for separate discussion?
I wanted to pull out the nomination for Jan Karavich.
We'll move that to the first item of the discussion action items section. Which, which, do you know which item that was?
It's one of the, I think, a middle school special ed teacher.
Echo? Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so, any others? All right, then I will move for unanimous, under unanimous consent, I will move for approval of the nominations for five teacher nominations for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, approval of a Oyster River Middle School... twenty-three school year, approval of a Oyster River Middle School material leave of absence from approximately September twenty-sixth until the end of January of twenty-twenty-three, and for second read and adoption policies, JBAB, transgender and gender expression, IMBA, distance education, JFCB, care of school property. Second from Brian, all those in favor of unanimous consent agenda, seven in favor, unanimous consent agenda is approved. All right, then, um, we'll move immediately into the discussion action items with the nomination for Jan Karavich.
I move to nominate Jan Karavich, um, and just wanted to take this opportunity to say...
Before we have discussion, we need to have a second.
Oh.
A second from Matt. Go ahead.
Wanted to take this opportunity to say how fantastic it is that someone started, Jan started as a substitute, long-term sub, um, in two, twenty-twenty, I believe, and has just grown, um, through her work with Oyster River as well as through her numerous other external activities and the, um, recommendation letters from the Oyster River Middle School teachers, um, that we received, were just so moving as to her creativity and dedication to, um, kids of all sorts of, of special needs, and, um, so, a particular shout-out to, to Jan for her growth with the district and a thank you for, um, staying with us and continuing to grow with us.
Other discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the nomination is approved. All right, um, Jim or Suzanne or who, uh, High School Director of Counseling nomination, who's presenting that one?
Yes, so, um, Rebecca and I will be speaking to that, um, we, I just wanted to take a minute to remind people about the position itself and some of the shifts and changes that have occurred over the years. So, um, prior to twenty-twenty, prior to this year, the position, there was a district-wide counseling director, um, and that position was held for a long time by, um, Heather McAnoff and then Kim Felch, um, after Heather, and then one of the things that had been determined, um, is that that position was really not very effective in that it wasn't, that person was being spread very, very thin, to be able to be a director of the high school counseling team as well as the director of counseling for the district. So in twenty-twenty-one, Todd worked with the counseling department and leadership to, to change the way that it is organized, the leadership within counseling is organized, and so now there, um, for this school year, it was the first year that we went, in a sense, back to having a high school specific counseling director, and then having one person at each level, so a K through four counseling coordinator, so this person is an SEL coordinator for, um, for K through four, and then having a middle school coordinator also, and then having the high school director, so the three of them work together on district-wide, um, SEL, um, work, MTSSB work, they work as the crisis management, um, team, and they, they meet regularly to talk about that work. So, uh, currently Felicia Sperry is the K through four coordinator, um, Kim Felch left the position of, as the district-wide director of counseling and shifted over to middle school and is the coordinator for the middle school, and then we had a director of counseling at the high school. The current director of counseling at the high school has decided that, um, it, that they wanted to return to working with children, um, on a regular basis, it's a different type of position, it's an administrative position, um, and so Becca and the counseling department went through that process to find a new, uh, director for the counseling department.
So I can speak to the process that we went through, um, so we had eight applicants, and one of the things that we were looking for is counseling experience but also administrative experience, and so we did interview four people, we narrowed that down to two finalists, so on the original interview committee, it was myself, Mark Milliken, Mike McCann, Sean Kelly, an English teacher and department head for English, Lisa Holbeck, a math teacher and department head for math, um, Kim Sekera, one of the counselors, Sean Peschow, our ELO coordinator, and Sherry Ficker, our registrar, so that group narrowed it down to the two finalists. The two finalists came in, and then I had, um, three various groups, we had the leadership team, we had a district team that had, um, Kim Felch, Felicia Sperry, and Catherine Plord, um, and then we also had a, the counseling groups, so the entire counseling staff, so each finalist met with all three of those groups, um, and then they also sat down with myself and Suzanne and went through another interview, and I also had them do two writing prompts, and then from that interview process, we chose Shannon Karen, and so I am extremely pleased in all of the abilities that she would be bringing to this job, um, she has worked in the director role before, so she has done master scheduling, she has done program, she, uh, pr, programming for counseling, she is trauma-informed, um, she is a student interventionist right now in Concord, um, works extremely intimately with MTSS, and so is very familiar with that, um, so she's very excited about coming into Oyster River and learning our community, uh, but also looking at what she can bring to helping us improve all of our programs and what she's gonna bring to our kids and to our staff. Can I answer any questions?
Suzanne and Rebecca, before they ask questions, I gotta make the nominations, so, for the reasons stated by Suzanne and Rebecca, I would nominate Shannon Karen as the new director of high school, uh, counseling. There you go.
Any questions?
Just a comment, uh, from her resume, it seemed like she was tailor-made for this position for the reasons you described, um, in addition, viewers should know she's had experience with competency-based grading and the translation and interface with higher education, as well as experience overhauling the counseling website, so, uh, as we're thinking about how to communicate with families, um, that will be something we can, uh, look to her strengths as well.
I actually ended up, um, not meaning to, but I spoke with five different people for references, and all of them were glowing, absolutely glowing, but one that actually brought up the fact that she initiated that, um, that they, they needed some help and she jumped in and she offered to actually help with the webpage, and, um, that she, and she does that a lot actually, and takes things on and improves them, was one of the comments that they made.
Is there motion? Heather?
Uh, I motion to, um, accept Shannon Karen as the director of counseling.
Second from Denise?
Yes.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the nomination is approved. All right, and then we have, um, you have, you received by email on Monday, and, um, and then you have a hard copy of draft school board goals for next year, um, I apologize that you didn't get this sooner, that was a function of Wendy enjoying her time off, and the rest of us trying to do Wendy's job, it takes a whole lot of people to do Wendy's job.
It sure does.
So this is clearly not ready for adoption tonight, it is very much a work in progress, um, this is, this is a, a collaboration, I think that probably most of the edits in this came from myself and then from, from Suzanne, I know that, that Jim and Denise had also, um, made some, you know, contributed to this as well, but, uh, this was my translation of our discussion from our previous meeting in terms of the themes that I heard, um, kind of the, the way that we talked about them in terms of prioritization, and, um, and then trying to put some color around them in terms of, uh, where they are linked into the strategic plan and why they would be part of our school board goals. So, um, I know, I know that we have a workshop next week on communication, so that was theme two in this document, and I'm sure that those will change, maybe completely be rewritten as an outcome of that meeting, uh, that, that workshop next week, and, um, and beyond that, there are some that are definitely incomplete. I also, you know, at the top in, in red, you see that I think this is too long, um, this is too many goals for us for one year, they need to be, you know, prioritized, and I, I think that probably half the spending is probably about right for where we should be at when we come out of this process at the end. So, um, so this is for your consideration, and we can have some discussion about it tonight, or we can, um, you know, provide this to the board for consideration, and we can pick it up at our next meeting on the fifteenth. Discussion?
So I had a couple of thoughts reading through it, um, I don't know if we want to do that now.
Yes, please.
Okay, let's do it. So, within theme three, the advancing curriculum and instruction. It's good idea-wise, it's a little generic, but I also thought this might be the only place within the goals we had listed to talk about, um, continued growth and implementation of the MTSS systems, which is part of our strategic plan but isn't represented in our goals, and maybe we don't need it to be in the goals, but it's just a thought that that wasn't, um, wasn't in here at this point. The... Goal four point two, school board review proposed metrics goals with DEIJ coordinator by the second meeting in December, is that goals or metrics related to DEI coordinator performance or goals or metrics that the DEIJ coordinator is looking to work through within the next school year, that was vague.
Are those different?
One is the assessment of her and the other is what she is striving to do, I see them as different.
So I, I will, you know, on that one, so, I mean, regarding the curriculum and instruction, uh, I'm gonna give Suzanne full credit for that one, because I think I put basically a placeholder in there and left it blank, and Suzanne contributed a lot there. On, on theme four, um, yeah, this is, this is, uh, you know, we had, we had some discussion last fall about what this position would be and around the job description, and, um, and I was trying to crystallize some of that, so I'm definitely open to clarifying and rewriting what that should be, um, and, uh, yeah, I, I'm, that's, there's, I'm definitely open to...
So Michael, one of the things I would say on that is, um, now that Rachel's been confirmed and bringing together the DEIJ committee, I think that we can put, the committee can put, you know, specifics into this that would make sense for the school year and bring them back to you if that's appropriate, you can have a generic piece and then we can fill it in, or...
Yeah, and I think we want to remember that this is not goals necessarily for Rachel, this is goals for the board.
Right.
So this is our interface with, with the DEIJ coordinator.
Yep.
I like four point three, um, and the question of what would the objection, objective of the workshop be, um, my thought on that was if there was something that the district was doing as part of their professional development and all the staff were coming to it, that it would be a fitting place for the board to come as well, and that would be how we would meet that goal if that was appropriate, um, because we also have the workshop in June, which I very, very much liked. Within the current competency-based, there is no mention of the high school, um, except for the review cycle, the first goal, which is, okay, maybe, it, it is what it is, um, I've noticed that.
So I, for my, for my, and I think, again, this is the section that we received input from multiple people, but from my personal perspective, um, we should be looking at the middle school, learning from the middle school experience...
Yep.
Before we start to change, maybe make adjustments at the high school, so...
I agree with that, I just wanted to make sure that was thoughtful and not accidental.
That was my thought in, in how this is laid out so far.
Yeah, I like that. Then, if we truly wanted to have this and prioritize themes one, two, and four, well, since one is kind of short, maybe we can, you know, sneak five in, um, would be the prioritization, I would be, communication and superintendent transition being the top two, and then the EIJ and competency-based being the other two.
Can I ask a question on that?
For a more manageable chunk, but that's just my two cents.
When I look at the strategic plan, am I, I could be incorrect, which is why I'm asking, the competency-based stuff, I feel like that's where we're the farthest behind. So that should be a priority to at least try to catch up, to get to where we should be in the strategic plan, so if we're gonna prioritize, I feel like that should be part of our priority.
I, I...
Go ahead, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I completely agree with, with what Michael said as far as, I think we can't really push, we did get behind, it was a, a function of the pandemic, it is what it is, and I really agree that we need to assess the middle school before we try to, you know, move forward, so, you know, I think that that's a good starting point and really what we should focus on in this year, um, I, I also have concerns that we're, this is a lot, you know, and when it's a lot for us, what we're really saying is it's a lot for our administrators, you know, because they're the ones that, you know, kind of have to follow up on all of this, so, you know, I, if anything, would kind of want to even cut back a little bit on a competency base and just say, yep, we, we definitely need to find out, you know, how the middle school's working, what needs to be tweaked there, you know, and, and certainly, uh, start looking at, um, you know, I mean, it's, it's pretty much all here, you know, we'll review the student and parent responses, um, how to navigate, you know, the competencies for each class, I mean, but I don't think we should, we, we should force it to go faster in any area.
No, no, I just mean if we're paring down this document, I believe that that should be on our list of goals.
I agree.
I wonder whether the, um, advancing curriculum and instruction, the big thing that, that jumped out in our earlier conversation was just the need for time for faculty, time and, and resources to support that time, um, for competency-based learning and reporting, um, as well as some of these other pieces that, that staff are working through, um, perhaps DEIJ-related or, um, or otherwise, and so, that might be able to be compressed and put under the competency-based one, even though, uh, it, it would extend to be, to more than that, just, you know, the, the bullet point is that the board is supporting the administration and finding creative ways to resource teacher professional development in these areas.
Well, when I look at that number three, I would ask, who is it that should be learning when it says gain a deeper understanding, and I see the leadership responsible, I don't see us on there at all, so if that's the case, then I don't, it's not really a board goal if we're not involved in achieving the goal.
So that's why maybe the sort of supporting or carving out, yeah.
Yeah.
I do see, and I, I see Suzanne's hand in this, the, um, the public identification of the curriculum review cycles and reminding everyone what they are, what they're doing, as well as, as UC said, putting the dollars to provide the professional development time or the, the summertime for the staff to start doing that work, um, so, um, yeah, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, um, and whether that just looks like Suzanne coming and talking to us in October before we get really heavy into the budget and saying, okay, this is the work we've done over the summer and looking at curriculum review, she's going to come up and tell me I'm wrong.
No, I think that's a fabulous idea, so I think that, um, that's part of the budget cycle, I think we'll end up having those conversations about the work that occurred over the summer, what's coming up and, and what the supports may, may need to be for the future work, yeah.
And I think UC's point in terms of resources is also going to blend in from that October presentation of the budget, so...
Yeah.
I had some other, um, thoughts similar to Heather in going through, um, overall, I agree, it's, it's long, I think that some of these themes can be compressed just by, sort of tightening what we're trying to get at and especially identifying the board role, so for example, Michael, you had suggested for communications, these are the administration's goals really, or, you know, whatever, um, this is a placeholder for, will, um, at, in our, uh, communications workshop, whatever the marching orders will be, will be mostly on, uh, administration, and our role as a board is to ensure that they have the resources, um, and, you know, are accountable for keeping that on track, so that could be compressed, perhaps theme three could be folded into theme five, as I mentioned, so that there would be five themes. I do think that we can't lose world language, it keeps getting, you know, it's, it's thorny, it keeps getting kicked down the, the road, um, I'm curious if our draft budget is distributed on October twenty-fourth, um, how, which is, I, I imagine why the, um, school board goal would be by the fall of twenty-twenty-two, we're putting the committee together, talk me through this timeline, is it realistic?
Well, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish in that timeline, so you have short meeting and long-term goals, I think that it's very realistic if we focus on the short term, if we're focused on the long term, no, because we, as a board, have not even decided what the five-year goal was in this area, it was one of those that when we went through the strategic plan, we put off to a future... we went through the strategic plan, we put off to a future date uncertain, and I think we're at that place because we've had many, many conversations about world language, but we don't have what the, what the intended outcome is going to be. And I think for the board, going back to what you're saying and what Matt's saying, is the board goal would be to define what that ultimate outcome is. So then we can backtrack administratively and say, okay, if this is the intended outcome, what's the path to get there? So part of the frustration is that we don't know what the, what the intended outcome of the board is.
I feel like we get this into the, you know, the chicken or the egg morass, because in conversations where Tom is raising questions, it's hard for the board to set a goal if we don't know what the actual trade-offs are, like more concretely what they are. And so as I understood the, the committee, it could have both a short-term and a long-term output, I guess, where the, the short-term is sort of kicking the tires more of, of what it would look like with a minor investment, no changes structurally to, you know, the beginning and end of the day and that sort of thing. And then, but the committee would also, as, as part of that, be looking at peer institutions and raising some of the, the trickier decisions that the board would have to make in setting its long-term goal. So I feel like we need to, we can't only wait for the board to give a direction before setting the committee to work to under, to answer some of the questions that Tom raised last year that we all have on what bigger things would, bigger trade-offs we'd face.
So in every goal that we've had, the board has defined what the intended outcome was. We've offered an outcome. This is the one area we haven't been able to finalize with the board. So I'm not saying our work has stopped. We've continued to provide feedback to the board. It's just that we don't know whether we're giving you the feedback that the board ultimately wants to make a decision. So when we've done the presentations, we've done short-term stuff and then, and cost-effective stuff, and we've talked about the long term in terms of the many obstacles that you face in trying to create a, a new program K through, K through 12, but of course, we're focusing in on K through four at this point. So, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that we're stay, we've stayed still. We've had many plans and many presentations to the board, but we still don't know what the intended outcome of the board is.
So I think our last, the last request from the board was for an understanding of the options, and that's where we came, the committee came back with, you know, essentially it was flex and plus as, as kind of our, our options for how we proceed from there, and, or models that are used in other districts. And then the questions that arose from the board in particular, and other sources as well, were, well, how does that actually work, given the other constraints and considerations on the elementary school day, elementary staffing, elementary space? And that's why I, I don't know if I think this can really be addressed by a world language committee, because it is, in my mind, bigger than, than world language. It's, it's about elementary school day and how the elementary day fits together and how it flows. And there's probably more moving pieces than just, just world language and that, and what has to, what has to, you know, be added and how that happens. So, so I don't, I don't know what I think our goal should be, but I am skeptical that we're going to get very far with just looking at it from a world language lens.
Unless I'm misunderstanding this document, this is our goals. So I think that when we're writing these goals, under leadership responsible, we should be first every time. So if we're writing a goal that has someone else being responsible as the leadership responsible, then I think it needs to be reworked. Now, we need the administrators and the staff to help contribute to that, achieving that goal. But I think if we're setting goals for us, we should be the leadership responsible for each one.
For world language, could that look like, provide clear guidance to administration on what the board needs in order to make strategic goal, strategic plan decisions? Because it seems like there's, there's still some sort of communication breakdown where the board is asking for sort of more information or a description of trade-offs and options, and the administration may be looking for guidance from the, from the board. So what do we, if, if it is, if it's our job, what do we need to provide you to satisfy us in order to provide more clarity on a strategic goal?
So Matt, just taking that from a different perspective, you, as a board, you set the expectations of what you want to see achieved as a school board. Operationally, as Heather has alluded to, and, and I think Michael, it's how your leadership team takes the board's goal and walks it through implementation. So the board itself sets the broad goals, and the leadership team then takes those goals and, and makes them materialize. By the board's participation of various committees, that gets actualized. But the board itself doesn't, you're all working, you know, busy people volunteering to be school board members. The board doesn't, the board sets the goals, they don't implement the goals. They expect administration to, to follow those goals and provide milestones along the way of how we're achieving those goals, where we are in those goals. And we got to a place, pre-COVID, where we were doing three presentations a year, beginning, middle, and end of the year, to give progress on where we are on, on goals. I think we did two this year, unless, unless it was something that was very timely, and that seemed more reasonable. I think three became kind of like overwhelming, but two seemed pretty reasonable. So, you know, when the goal, the board sets the goal, and you know, it's, it's literally the administration's job to make it happen.
Okay. So these are more district goals than the seven of us as a group?
It's a combination, right?
Okay.
It's what we want to keep our eyes on.
Okay.
Your point, your, your point is a good one.
It is, yeah.
That we, we can assume board responsibility in any board goal, right? It's inherent to the, to, to the list. But what Dr. Morse is describing is because, largely because of the limitations of a, a, a board being a public body, there are serious limitations to the work and action we can efficiently take. Therefore, there is a jumping off point where the board charges the administration, may charge committees, with some board participation, obviously, to get the work done.
Okay.
And then that, you know, comes back and forth, and then the board is responsible for making certain decisions at certain points. But you make a good point.
I think operationally, the board has been very effective at communicating its needs by, we've got into this question in strategy, what is the board specifically looking for? Like, we establish the goals, and then we usually take time on a particular issue to say, okay, so what are the fundamental questions the board wants answered related to this goal? What is the product that it's looking for? And I think that's been very effective in the last five years. Even during COVID, it was pretty effective. And it, it really defines our work. So, you know, I don't want to put a lot of effort into something and, and miss the target. So by the, the seven of you asking clear questions, we know how to backfill into the outcome, and we're, we're much more surgical in being able to address a given issue, and that kind of goes back to what UC was saying in terms of chicken and the egg. So if you have your clear goals, and then we say, okay, so how, what is it you're looking for to achieve that goal?
And delay the egg, is what-
Yeah. And then we, we then administratively, you know, make it happen.
Denise?
With regard to the world language, there is a note under goal 6.1 that it's too soon to evaluate this change. So I, I guess I would suggest scrapping 6.1 and sticking with 6.2, which is really what we're talking about anyway, that we need to refresh our findings and recommendations from the previous world language study, and then, you know, so kind of, again, revisit where, where were we, where were we, and what direction are we heading? So that would be my suggestion, is that perhaps we just stick to, you know, kind of revisiting where, where we are, and then making a decision in terms of what direction we want to go in from there.
I wonder whether we can allow for some space between the 23-24 school year, which goal 6.2 is focused on, and the idea of setting the longer-term strategic plan goal, which, you know, might include school, the school day structure, or, you know, other longer-term considerations that we would put into a strategic plan and, and move towards incrementally. So having both a, a new 6.1 towards the 23-24 school year, and a 6.2 of the board's goal would be to come up with a point of view on a, on a, on a goal, if any, for, for K-12 world language for the strategic plan.
Or maybe, maybe come up with a new timeline, is really what we're talking about, perhaps. I don't know.
I think the goal, then, like, the timeline would, would, could fall from that, and, you know, we could go back to the list of questions that Tom Newkirk developed last year, see if that's where we, the sort of, the types of questions that would be helpful to the leadership team in answering and sort of fleshing out those options. How does that sound?
So, let me be a little bit of the bad guy on this one. The leadership has a certain amount of time, the board has a certain amount of time. And as Michael said, if we are trying to push world language into K through four, it is a massive structural change, coming off of being behind in our implementation of MTSS and reworking social emotional learning, because two years of the pandemic have changed behaviors within all of the grades within the district. And there are students who are behind in certain areas. We've hired the second math person to help specifically in the K through four arena. And I don't know if right now is the time to try to shoehorn in world language, based on the fact that we have some work to do. Curricular reviews got screwed up. We're looking at standards as well in the K through four space. I just worry that if we try to shoehorn in a massive change in K through four before we get back to being solid on all the other fronts, that we are not going to be successful. And I know it's pushing the can further down, and that's very frustrating for people who are really excited about implementing world language at K through four. But it's just, we, we got to give somewhere, and for me, this is the give.
I think the answering, there was such momentum and then COVID, and I understand that we, we need to shift. It is, I know, something that Dr. Morse has been working on for many years, and there is very strong community support for it also. I think the intent is that we get the information we need to make that, you know, to have that discussion. And I, we don't want willy-nilly requests for information from the administration, but this seems like it at least passes the threshold of learning more about in order to be able to have those questions about priorities. That would be my response. Others?
I mean, it really speak, I mean, Heather's observation really speaks to the issue of is, what is, is this, it's in the strategic plan without an outcome, because we, the board, you know, really kind of went round and round on it and couldn't, couldn't decide what the outcome was, was, whether the, whether what was a major push by parents eight years ago, six years ago, five years ago, pre-COVID, this, this is where this one started, from, from parents. And, and so that, this really speaks to the issue of, is the board still there? I mean, I think what Heather's raising is, there's new people on the board, is the energy and drive there still? And I think UC's point is, let us get a presentation in front of you, and, and you guys can make up your minds whether it's still a priority or not. I would, obviously, everybody knows it's a passion of mine, because I really feel like multiculturalism is a critically important part of where American public schools fail. And, you know, when coming back from Europe, you know, they start teaching English preschool. And so every European graduate speaking just plus their native language, and people who are advocates for this work in our district speak three and four and five, and there's even one that speaks eight different languages. And so part of my drive really fit into the diversity work. So, you know, answering the board's questions and then having that conversation is critically important. And in, in, in the end, you know, it's really up to you guys to make it, up your mind whether it's still a priority. But I think the reason it's there is it's been there for the better part of eight years now, because of, of, of drive by parents.
It's not necessarily that we shouldn't do it. I think we absolutely should do it. It's, should we do it in the next year?
Absolutely.
And that's, that's my hang-up.
Yep. Well, and if, if we want something to happen in the 23-24 school year, we really don't have next year, we really have, like this says, till October.
Yeah, which is too soon.
Because it needs to be in the budget, or it's not, or it's not in the budget.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Heather. I think, you know, looking at it that way, I don't think we are there. So I think, I think that we should take it out for this year, and-
And I would also point out that Michael's, Michael's absolutely right. We have to look at this. Every time this has come up, it's been structural changes that we need. What, what are the, what are the cost-benefit ratios related to the school day? Do we have the capacity to increase the school day? Just millions of questions about the, a major revision. And that's why I always say, what's the short term? What's the immediate term? What's the long term? So anything beyond the short term is a major revision to structural, structurally how we do the day. I do not believe that to be the case in the short term. I think there's a way of doing it in the short term. But let's, let us do our work, and we'll bring it back to you. And, and ultimately, the, you know, the place where I keep on falling short is not really knowing what the board's commitment is to the K through four work, because we've never made the outcome. But I've made many presentations, had many people do a lot of work to get us there, and I'll continue to answer the questions of the board and, and try to get it to a place where it, at least the board can make a cogent decision, one that makes sense, based on where we are in time, because every point Heather made about being behind on important stuff is absolutely true. So.
I want to take one, one step back and just ask the general question of, do we have the right themes and do we have them in the right order? So, so that is, definitely was my interpretation from our last discussion, in terms of what they are and, and the sequence that they are in. So I, I heard, I heard some, you know, I think, I think reasonable points about combining or absorbing theme three into the, into theme five. We've discussed whether world language should be a focus of this year's work for the board or not. But I think that's an important point, is to, do we have the right themes and are they in the right order? And then the other thing I wanted to just point out before we move on from this discussion is, the, the last, the very last thing on this is areas of discussion from our previous meeting that we did not include as themes. I did that because these were things that we discussed briefly, but they were not things that I heard from more than one of the board members, but I didn't want to lose track of them completely. So, so, and, and I, I also may not have interpreted these correctly, so I also didn't want to lose track of them for that reason. Brian, I, that first one, program evaluation, I said theme six, but that was, then I ended up renumbering them after I wrote this. So I think I went for that to be, is that a, something that would fit as part of the curriculum and instruction or, or competency-based learning section, and then you can see the other items. Oh, risk and behavior and LEAD Act, we didn't talk about that one. And then the business administrator search, I, I don't think that is going to be as big of a thing.
Right, that's not our thing, and that was explained, so I'm fine with taking that off. Yeah, because that was, I just wanted to make sure it was out there, but it is, so I'm not worried about it.
Okay.
And as far as the risky, the youth risk behavior survey and other things like that, the, as a, I'd love to learn more about the extent of any problems that we have and what we can do about it, but it's, doesn't rise to the level of a board goal for sure.
That will inform our SEL, MTSS, and academic work.
Right.
So it's, if it's not there, it's not, it's still being, it's a serious consideration of the work that we do.
Michael, to your question about order, if it is in rough order of priority, I might switch the competency-based learning and reporting with DEI J, just, I also, to Heather's point about goal 4.3, hold a school board workshop, and then what would be the objective of the workshop? Similar to, you know, Michael, you had asked, we don't get workshops in math or even SEL, why would we get a workshop in, in that? And it's a really good question.
Well, that goes back to Al, remember? And that's where that goes back.
Exactly.
As many presentations as we did on DEI J work, Al's point at the time was, no presentation has been done to the school board itself.
And even beyond a presentation and to an interactive workshop, it would be the same reason that the administrators or teachers in various subjects would go through, you know, something a little bit more interactive. We, just like they do, we as school board members have interventual interactions that are televised, you know, that the public watches. And like teachers and administrators, we make structural decisions and policy, it's not curriculum, but it's a policy, that affect a lot of people. And to have the opportunity to peek under the hood of what we have, are, sort of, is seen as normalized for us. A fish doesn't know that it's wet. And just as we're asking that of administrators and teachers, we could benefit from that as well. The third category, I would say, is in individual interactions. Again, just as we ask of it of our administrators and teachers, decision makers and teams can be more effective by going through that sort of thing as individuals and as a group. I'm also okay with if it doesn't make the cut for board goals, and we go a little bit more slowly towards when the coordinator might be able to recommend that or facilitate us.
And Michael, I would wonder whether the DEIJ work couldn't be incorporated into the curriculum and competency-based work as well, rather than having it stand out as, I don't necessarily mean every single bullet in every single area, but more deliberate in terms of what we're expecting. And from the DEIJ work, we're expecting that it will be incorporated into the curriculum. And equity is part of our assessment practices. And so I could see that easily being incorporated into the academic and CBE sections as well, unless you want it to be a completely distinct category. I think it integrates pretty well into those.
And on the issue of priority, that, especially if we're going to do what Jim just suggested, that should really be number two. Communication is a good number two, but it's also got a pretty clear plan of action, a pretty, you know, like, a very achievable goal. So it feels like it should be less of a priority because, or lower down the priority list, I should say.
I think, I agree with you that it sounds like it should be, but we haven't gotten very far yet, so.
Well, I mean, the first three things are action items that are, you know, things that just, I say just need to be done, right? The fourth one, what can we do? But that's, that's a good goal. How do we improve our board-to-community communication? But that's also.
But going back to your original point, which one are you saying you think reasonably should?
The competency base, I think, would be above communication, just in my opinion.
So I'm going to argue the other way, because I think the board can have a larger hand in the communication side than it can have in the competency-based. And in terms of board goals, it might need to remain number two for that reason. But I am not strongly married to either, so.
Thank you.
Whatever floats your boat.
Yeah.
I guess I would suggest waiting, we're having a workshop next week, so perhaps we should hold off on further discussion until we see what the outcome of that is, because I think that's going to further clarify. You know, we may want to add to this or what have you. So that would be my suggestion.
I imagine the competency-based section will be revised. One thing I didn't see there was what Matt raised about the fifth and ninth grade transitions as being super important and an area of focus for the year.
I don't know. I don't know that I see those as board goals, I guess. I don't know.
Well, we spent a lot of time on fifth and ninth grade transitions over the years, so maybe the goal is, what are those things that we do?
Around competency-based grading in particular. So, for example, preparing eighth graders for a different type of, I'm sorry, I should have been clearer on that.
Well, that's part of the competency base, to me. That's where that would fit in.
Yeah, that's what she said.
Yeah.
I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Well, I think that may be 5.4, informational competencies and reporting, including how to find and navigate. So, yeah, I get what you're saying. There's the student side, and then there's the parent side. And 5.4 might be more the parent side as opposed to the student prep side. So, yeah, I get that.
I think it's worth explicitly identifying it, because we don't fully grasp the impact of the competency grading system on that transition. Yes, we invest a lot of energy in those transitions themselves, but sort of that deeper analysis of pros and cons, we, I don't think we've discovered yet. So I think it's worth highlighting.
I also think the clarity on the goal is for parents or for, you know, staff. I think the parents is what we've been talking about consistently, in terms of creating a report that is easy for parents to navigate and understand.
And I'm talking about something different, where if you have the high school perfect system and perfect communication, and middle school perfect system, perfect communication, but the eighth graders are being dumped into high school without having, I don't know, something parallel, or then it's harder for the students.
Or a little bit of overlap.
Right.
A fourth grader that's doing meets work goes and does the same level of work at the middle school, and suddenly that's progressing. So where's that transition, you know, to teach them that more will be expected of them?
All right. So what I'd like to propose is that, this has been a really helpful discussion. If this feels like it is kind of the right approach to how we structure this, then we'll continue down this path. And I've got a bunch of notes from tonight, and I would say, if you have any further comments, if you can get them to Jim before next, say, Monday, and then we can, we can take some time next week to work through this prior to the meeting on the 15th. And if we don't get done with this on the 15th, that's okay. I think this is, I think this is the right discussion that we need to have to really crystallize what we want to, what we want to focus on and what we want the administration to focus on next year.
Can we wait for the notes to Jim until after the workshop?
Only on communication.
Noted.
Because we, I want this to be in your packet on that Friday.
Yeah.
And that's not going to happen if we have to do the whole thing on Thursday.
I agree.
Michael's the hammer.
Also, that Friday is graduation, and there's a lot of things going on.
Yeah.
I'll leave you here.
Did you get the diplomas to sign?
No. Do we have dipl, I wasn't going to ask that here, but I might as well. Oh, diplomas have arrived.
Yeah.
Okay. Usually they've arrived by, like, April, so Rebecca says no.
Can we do a quick stretch break?
Yes. Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other, does that sound like a direction for goals moving forward? Is there any other comment on that tonight? All right. Let's take, let's take a three-minute recess.[1248.83]